Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's regular meeting for October 28th, 2024. This time we'll move to roll call. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Commissioner Bott.
Here.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Fraser.
Here.
Commissioner Knabel. Commissioner Rasmussen, here. Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Rasmussen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Britton. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries six zero. Item four on tonight's agenda is open forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who's here in the audience tonight to speak to the county or the commission on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you are here for the Chase Bank plat, this capital improvement plan, the water treatment plant, or the cannabis ordinance, you'll have an opportunity to speak on those items later. If there's something else you'd like to talk to us about, now is the time. So at this time, I will open public hearing, or open, open forum. And if you'd like to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Diane Maslowski. We live down in Pine Cooley, 11570 Leighton Avenue South. And I'm here to propose that we find a way through grants, through something, to get a bike path from connecting us from that area up to the bike paths that we have here. And we would be able to go all the way, as I talked to Zach, about to Lake Elmo, once we connect here. Right now, my husband and I ride bikes regularly. And we come on the highway in order to connect to the Ravine Park and then go from there. And it's very dangerous to go along the highway. You have some ice, and especially during the construction. Holy Toledo. It was bad. And I drew you some maps and made a proposal for you that we find a way. I'm more than willing. I taught in the district here for 20 years, and I am more than happy to work on grants, or do whatever it takes to try and get us something to connect us to the rest of the place. We can't get into Hastings because of the bridge and the river and whatever, and we can't get up here because we have to go on the highway. So if there is a way that we can find some of the money to get this in the planning stages at least, before I have to move out of there and live in a home somewhere, and then we can get, we have lots of younger families moving into our area. It would be a lot safer for them to be able to get out and go. And it's good exercise for the families to be able to do this. So I'd really like to see us try and get something. I am willing to do whatever it takes to try and work on it. And whoever needs to have me help, I'm there to do it. I'm retired now. I can do those things. So do you have questions, or?
Anyone have any questions?
I want to see your map.
Derek?
The map you have with you.
Oh, my map.
Yeah, we'll take that.
My beautiful map. I was not an art teacher. I proposed an east and a west side of the highway.
Emily, did you want to maybe put it up on the screen so everybody can see it?
Probably not.
We have a doc cam over there? Or not.
We can just pass it, too. That's fine.
Our thoughts were that coming on the east side of the highway, we'd be able to connect to, at Kimbrough, to the frontage road there and come in to Ravine Park on that side that used to be the drive-in area, which is now kind of closed off, but you can get in there with your bike and/or walking. And that, to me, would be the easiest way to do it. But I'm not a planning person, so I, I don't design things like that.
Understood. Okay.
I got one quick question, please.
Fisher Rasmussen.
Is the challenge getting across Highway 61, is that the biggest?
Oh, yeah. We're on the west side, and so we have to get over there. We usually come at the light, and then the rest of the way, you've got about a mile or a little bit more of riding just along the shoulder of the highway and try to get to Kimbrough before anyone gets to you. So it's, it's a scary part. We have two grandchildren. We like to take them riding with us. We can't do the places unless we haul the bikes. And that makes it difficult when you're wanting to go do something. Every time you want to go out and do that, you have to bring your bikes on there. And like I said, there's a lot of neighbors who now have young children, young families, and they do a lot of biking. We have one man who has a handicapping condition, and he rides a low bike and pedals with his hands. He can't get anywhere except in our little circle neighborhood there because it's too dangerous for him to go on the highway. But, and a lot of walkers. And I was telling Emily earlier, I said COVID at least brought everyone together because we're all out walking and exercising and doing things now. And it'd be nice if we had connection to someplace other than just our three streets that we walk around. So that's my thought.
All right. Any other questions?
Oh, I do.
Commissioner Bott.
Yeah. Did you already say that you like the east side plan better than the west side plan?
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
I thought you said that you would prefer the east side, the plan, as you call it, over the west side plan?
I do. I think it would work better because that would give us a way to cross the highway at the stoplight and have a crosswalk there. Where on the west side plan, you'd have to come up to County Road 19 with the trail and then come across the bridge on 19 in order to get up to Ravine Park or any of the other trails beyond that. So I thought it would be better to do it that way. I don't know that.
Okay.
But it's my thought.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then did you intend for us to keep the maps, or did you want them back?
They're all yours.
All right. So without, without objection, we'll make them part of the record for the meeting tonight. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for open forum?
Hello. I'm going to start calling you the crying wall. I think that's a good name. What? Bonnie Madder, 6649, in Skip Avenue South Cottage Grove. I'm going to say this now rather than as part of the CIP, but the city of Cottage Grove has a website. All public hearings should have a separate post on the landing page in the latest news section. The latest news public hearing post should go up at the same time the meeting files are posted in the public meeting section. Link the public hearing latest news entry to the public hearing documents. The city must be as transparent as possible with the residents and provide this information in a timely manner. A post on the city's Facebook page would also help in reaching as many residents as possible with public hearing notifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, I'll close open forum. We'll move on to Chair's explanation of the hearing process. If I don't have a copy, so I will try to do the best I can off the top of my head. The Cottage Grove Planning Commission is an advisory commission to the city council. We make recommendations based on presentations that are made before us at open hearings. Again, we are advisory to the city council only. Typically, at a time that a hearing is done, the city will have an opportunity to explain the proposal and provide their recommendation as to what action they think we should take. The applicant will then have the opportunity to provide any other additional information that they'd like us to know. And then finally, we would open public hearing on the application and allow anyone in the audience to speak for or against any proposal. Counselor, the commissioners may ask questions of staff, the applicant, and the public. And at that time, after everyone's been heard on the application, we'll close public hearing, and the planning commission will then discuss and vote on the motion. There are two complete event, agenda packets outside the room that contain all of the materials that the planning commission has access to. You're free to look at those, but please don't remove those items from the table. The planning commission or the city council will then act on these matters at their next meetings. And I think we'll have a schedule for you later as to which items will happen at which meeting. But they will act on each of these items that are before the planning commission regardless of what the planning commission's recommendation is. I think that's about the gist of it. And so with that, we will move on to number six, which is public hearing and applications. Six A is the Chase Bank plat, case PP 2024-018, with Connor Jakes presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Great to be with you. The application before this evening is a preliminary plat for the proposed Gateway North second addition. The subject site is the Kohl's parcel, which is located just north of 80th Street within the Gateway North commercial node or area. Just to highlight, in the southwest, kind of part of the site adjacent to the Kohl's site is the Culver's Restaurant. In the south part of the Kohl's site, recently constructed, was the Chase Bank structure, and then US Bank located in the southeast portion adjacent to the subject site. A little background on the site. In 2002, the original approvals were granted for Kohl's to construct an 88,000 square foot building plus a 20, future 20,000 square foot addition on the east side of that structure. Then in 2007, there were approvals for the Culver's Restaurant, which constructed that restaurant with a drive-through. And then recently, a few of the commissioners may recall, in 2023, Chase Bank was approved, which was approximately a 3,000 square foot bank with a drive-through located on the south side of the subject site before this evening. So the proposal is a preliminary plat to split 1.03 acres from the Kohl's site to create a separate parcel for that Chase Bank site. So when Chase came through, there was a ground lease agreement between Kohl's and Chase Bank to allow Chase Bank to operate on the Kohl's parcel and have those two businesses. However, as business has progressed, after the construction of Chase Bank, the applicant has decided to move forward with separating those lots. So each business is on its own parcel and has its own tax identification number. With that, the recommendation is on screen before you. Staff's available for any questions. And unfortunately, the applicant was not able to make it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Rasmussen.
Dividing out this parcel, is it safe to assume they still meet all setback and parking requirements?
Yep. Mr. Chair, members of the commissioner, Commissioner Rasmussen, that's correct. So Kohl's still meets all parking requirements and applicable standards, as well as that Chase Bank site that was recently approved. And then there is an access agreement in place between the parcels to allow access to each site via that private drive. And then just to note, that Chase Bank site would be required to abide by the conditions of the resolution that approved it.
Thank you. Commissioner Britton.
It was mentioned in the staff report about park dedication. And I guess I'm a little, could you clarify for me when that occurs? I see this is a lot split, and I know that that triggers things, but something got built here. Is it only, does that only occur when there's a lot split? Or should we be doing this as new structures go up?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Britton, great question. In this case, it's a bit of a unique situation, given Chase Bank was not on its own parcel. So usually, we receive park dedication at the time a new parcel is created. So at the time of Chase Bank, we weren't able to collect park dedication at that time. So we can collect it now that a new lot is being created. And then also, at the time of original approvals with Kohl's, there was not actually park dedication paid with that original approval in 2002. So in 2007, Culver's also paid park dedication, and then we're applying that here to the Chase Bank site, given there was no previous reception of park dedication funds. And there's the new lot that's created.
So if the additional 20,000 square feet east of Kohl's were developed, and it wasn't split into a separate parcel, would that trigger a park dedication fee? Or would it have to then split that parcel as well in order to trigger that?
Commissioner Britton, I would assume that we would not be able to collect park dedication, given it's not a new parcel. And that addition was approved with the original approvals in 2002. If there was a newly split lot, it would follow kind of the same process as Culver's and Chase Bank here. Then we would collect park dedication funds at that point, but.
So knowing now what we know, would we have collected park dedication fee when Kohl's originally built, and then it wouldn't matter?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bott?
So the access is now shared between three plots, is it? Or three parcel?
Yep, that's correct. Yeah. So the access comes off of Hardwood Avenue here, and then US Bank has an access, Chase Bank, and then Culver's has the drive-through and then access to their parking lot. So there's a private access agreement that all properties are a part of and party to that allows basically people to travel within that area to each parcel.
My, my question is, does that meet the requirements? I mean, that's a private access, right? Do we have any regulations on that? Because it's now shared between four parcels, so to say.
Yeah, Commissioner Bott, that would be basically a private agreement between the private parties that the city wouldn't have any party to or interaction with. So all the property owners would be required to have that recorded and work through that process privately, apart from city involvement.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? I guess I just have one more question for you, and I don't know that you know the answer to this. But is there a reason why the lot split wasn't done at the time the approvals for Chase Bank was done in 2023?
It's a good question. I don't know for certain, but from the sounds of it, Kohl's is kind of going through a company-wide restructuring, reorganization, where they're trying to split off parcels where they have parking lot developments, they call it, just to clear things up. It helps on our side, too, because our utility billing kind of follows parcel identification numbers. So it works out kind of in the best interest for everyone, and then separates taxes and such. So that's kind of what I was informed of. And yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Applicant wasn't able to be here tonight, so at this time, we'll open public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application can step to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? If not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions stipulated in the staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries six zero. Six B tonight is the capital improvement plan for 2025 through 2029, case CP 2024-020.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm here to take you through the capital improvement plan for 2025 through 2029. This CIP is updated annually, and it really kind of lays out what's to come in the next five years. This is a planning document, and it estimates our capital needs and how these projects will be funded over a five-year period. And then you guys get to review it to ensure that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. So I'm going to start the presentation by turning it over to Zach, who's going to, our parks director, who's going to take us through the parks and facilities portion of this presentation. And then I will pop back and do the streets, utilities, and pedestrian facilities.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Good to be back. I'm going to take this kind of in three segments, or actually, four segments now, I think about it. I'm going to go through all the park improvement projects that are kind of spread out through the, through the entire community. And then I'll take a pause, take any questions you might have on those, because as you can see with this first slide, there's quite a bit of projects in there. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the public facility improvements at Kingston Park and Mississippi Dunes Park, the Preserve Play Prosper Plan, the impacts of that. And then lastly, some of the sports facilities, like the Ice Arena, has some capital improvements in there that I'll talk about. So I'll pause at each of those, so I can give you a chance to ask questions specific to those. So let's start with the park, park and trail improvements. So in 2025, the Denzer Community Park, which is off of 100th and Hadley Avenue, over by the North Point Development, there's a small neighborhood park proposed to be constructed there. We've actually started some initial grading. So we have $500,000 for the development of that park through the Park Dedication Fund. Altman Park Construction, $700,000 to get that project off the ground, some grading and some utility improvements. Ultimately, you'll see that project again in 2026, which is a $2.3 million expenditure there, which is supported with some grants, and then also bonding as well to pay for that. Playground replacement, so we replace those on a 20-year, on a 20-year cycle. So Hardwood and Beldon Parks will get replaced in 2025. Proposing to replace a couple picnic shelters that are, I think, originally built in 1984 at Lamar Park for a total of $80,000. We've been converting all of our sports lighting from metal halide to LED. So those, the next in line would be the Harse Side Park improvements. Obviously, there's energy savings with that and a little more eco-friendly. So $65,000 in 2025 to convert that ice skating rink to LED. More picnic shelters at both Pine Glen and Pine Tree Pond Park for $60,000. Kingston Park, this is kind of twofold. The site power upgrade is something that the city council and staff has been looking to do for quite a while, just because the, the electrical power to, to support the events there is really not sufficient. So a lot of people have to bring in their own generators and other things. So, but then also, the discussion of the potential for the Kingston Park buildings. So this would accommodate both by bringing power off of Indian Boulevard. And if the building doesn't happen, at least we can still continue those site upgrades. So this would include getting a new transformer, and then also spreading power along that main parking lot so that there's outlets on the, on the parking lot, parking lot poles. So people can use those for things like food truck festivals, Strawberry Fest, Fourth of July soccer tournaments, all those huge events that are out there. Peter Thompson building door replacement, just that those are in dire need of replacement. Inclusive playground, just trying to keep that rubber surfacing as long as possible. So we're investing $60,000 to kind of patch it together and then seal it. Just a routine maintenance procedure, an expensive one. But when it's $300,000 to replace all that rubber, if we can get another five years out of it, that's a big deal. So Woodridge Park rink board replacement, those are old wood boards that just need to be replaced. And then actually, we're proposing to turn that into a pickleball court, just because the, the pickleball growth is kind of through the roof right now. So we're proposing to replace the boards and then also put four to five pickleball courts inside that. It's a good use, because otherwise, that rink just sits there unused in the off-season. So in, last year, the off-season was 52 weeks. So, so it's a good use. There's already lights there. Let's take advantage of the lights that are already up there. And so I think that's a good, that's a good co-use. So we pave it and paint it. And then Hidden Valley Park, you'll hear a little bit more, but they're going to do some pavement management, management in 2025 in that area. And that's usually an opportunity for us to go in and do some minor park improvements to the neighborhood parks. We have about $150,000 to add things like a picnic shelter, a small sport court, add some trail extensions and things like that. 2026, Stillponds Neighborhood Park Development, that's up just north of Altman Mills School to the west of, kind of connects to Peter Thompson Park just to the west of that. That's just a natural area, so not a lot of structural improvements, other than putting some trails in and maybe a boardwalk. Talked about the open park construction, Pine Tree Pond Park improvements. You'll actually hear a little bit about that tonight, or maybe not. But I think you have heard about it before, that, you know, with the utility bill, with the water treatment plant, there's going to be some Pine Tree Pond Park improvements. And you have seen the master plan on that. I will talk about the local option sales tax on a different slide. Hamlet Park, skate park shelter replacement for $100,000, sports light improvements, we talked about that. That's actually courts, the ball fields, and ice rink there. And then the Kingston Park, Kingston building replacement, currently at five, budgeted for $5.5 million in 2026 would be a build in '26 and bonded in '27, if that happens. 2027, just again, a neighborhood park development potentially at Roberts Lake, Military Trailhead, or any future neighborhood that might pop. or any future neighborhood that might pop up. So you'll see that, I think, in the next three years. We just have placeholders there, because as development comes, we need to be prepared for building those parks out. Because when neighborhoods get built, people want their parks and their playgrounds, if they're planned for in the comprehensive plan. Lamar Sports, that would be the next one. Lamar Park would be the next one to get sports lighting replacement. And then replacing the court at Pine Cooley Park for $20,000. And then, actually, the Lamar Roof Replacement would not happen. That does have a current steel shell on it, so that one won't be in there. And then, in 2028, Old Cadge Grove Sportslighting Improvements, Highlands Tennis Court Replacement. Just that's, so a lot of times, we just put items on here because of their life expectancy. If we find out in 2028 that the Highlands Park Tennis Court doesn't need to be replaced, we won't replace it. We'll keep pushing it down. But we put everything based on life expectancies so that we're prepared for that when it happens. Because when a tennis court goes, it cracks, and then it kind of needs to be replaced. So we want to make sure we're prepared for that. Peter Thompson Park, kind of like Woodridge, we're kind of proposing to do the same thing, get more pickleball courts or sport courts on the west side, and make those courts, those ice rinks, multi-use. And then 2029, again, a neighborhood park, Pine Tree Pond Court Replacement, that's a small one. And then replacing the playgrounds at Hemley Way and North Ideal Park. And then Harse Side Park Improvements, which would be part of the pavement management area. We haven't really identified what those improvements would be. We have some time to do that. But we want to have a placeholder, just because typically, we will have trail extensions, a shelter replacement, or things like that. So I'll take a pause. Are there any questions with the park and trail improvements in this five-year plan?
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Two quick questions. Maybe I missed it. In 2028, local option sales tax, 5.25 million. Can you help me understand what that is?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna address that in the future slides coming up. So I skipped over all the local option sales tax items on there, and I'll address those separately.
All right. About pickleball courts, really quick, do we have any in town?
We do. So we have three at Granada Park currently. We have six at Glacier Valley Park. And then we have two, one at Cedarhurst Meadows, and then one at Sunny Hill Park, which are kind of more, you have to bring your own net. But it's interesting, the Granada Park, we had three there since 2014. And then we built the six here, and I thought that, we kind of thought that that would take care of the growth of pickleball. And it's been open for one year, and it's already, people can't get out of it. So it's crazy. You drive by there right now, I bet you it's full.
It's crazy. I haven't seen the ones in town, but the few I do drive by are wildly popular.
They're very nice. Drive north on 19, they're very nice courts with lights.
Nice.
Commissioner Bott?
The Highlands Tennis Court Replacement, I've been there. It looks like it needs replacement right away. I mean, why wait until 2028?
Commissioner Bott, thank you. That actually has, yeah, there's pretty significant cracking there, and we're gonna try to patch that this year. If that patch doesn't hold, we may have to change some things. And that's the one thing with the capital improvements, you know, this is our projected plan. You know, there's plenty of times where if that maintenance effort doesn't work, that repair doesn't work, we may have to come back to council at next year's capital improvements plan and say, hey, we want to move the Highlands Park Court up, and then move something else back. So, well, good point.
Commissioner Britton?
As we're talking about all these pickleball courts, and it looks like as you get to old ice rink areas, you pave them and allow them to be used for sports courts. Glacier Park, I don't believe that's paved, or is there a hard surface on that rink there?
It is not paved right now, Commissioner Britton.
Is that something that would be put in the queue for all of these things to have it be like the other courts and be able to be used in the offseason, like these courts that are being refurbished?
Chair, members of the commission, that's a possibility. Unfortunately, that one's a little bit harder, because it has to be excavated out. So you kind of got to take it all apart, and it's got a concrete border around it. So we did look at that one, and the Athletic Association is even looking at maybe partnering for, you know, like a roller blade court or something, or for roller hockey. So it's still in the conversation, but that's a little more difficult than we already know at Woodridge Park. The whole thing needs to come out, and we're kind of starting over, and you can run the paver down there as opposed to trying to wiggle into an existing rink.
Okay, I'm assuming, since all these refurbished parks are getting it, that from what we know now, even if it's not pickleball, but roller blading or something else, any new parks that we have, we'd consider that, if it has a hockey rink feature, to have that paved as a kind of a standard?
Commissioner Britton, I think that's fair to say that we want to look at that. But we also want to be careful, because, you know, ice and running equipment on it in the winter, I mean, that can be pretty hard on it, right? And we see what happens to the tennis courts with no equipment on it. So we're a little bit hesitant to go all in right away. We kind of want to see how Woodridge Park handles it first. And then just real quickly, I should mention, too, Glacier Valley Park is not a full-size rink. Woodridge and Peter Thompson are full-size rinks. So you can maybe fit four or five pickleball courts on those. Glacier Valley, you could probably only fit three on it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Commissioner Fisher.
These pickleball things, right? So is it just regular pavement, or is there a specific, like a special surface? Because I know if the ball doesn't bounce right, people get real upset. So what is the material that you pave it with?
Yeah, Commissioner Fisher, members of the commission, it's just a section of pavement. But then you have to hire another company that comes out, and they actually, it's like a driveway sealer, but it's much different than driveway sealer. But that's how they apply it.
Like coating, basically, on top of it?
Yeah, it's basically, we call it a court paint. It's not really a paint, but it's a shell that goes on there, and then they put the lines on top of that.
Okay, gotcha. And that's, you hire that, so that's an added expense to the asphalt as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're good to move on.
Thank you. So I want to talk a little bit about the Preserve Play Prosper Plan, which is coming up for a referendum here in about two weeks. Or I'm sorry, one week. Because it gets a little bit difficult to understand how that plays through in the capital improvements plan. As you saw, there were some items in the capital improvements plan. So I just want to explain real quick on how that works. And I want to start by pretending that all three questions passed. And then from there, then we would have to manage the process if one passed, or two passed, or none, or zero passed. But let's just pretend for now that all three projects passed. So at first, you know, we would issue debt. According to our finance consultants, we could issue debt for up to $17 million and be able to safely project that that revenue will come back in with whatever timeframe there, I think it was 15 years, that they were comfortable with. So we would issue $17 million in debt. Really, the first year, 2025, is just plan development, bidding, construction planning. So there's a lot that goes into that. Right now, these are all concept plans. So we need to, you know, develop the full plan set, which I think the commission is understanding how that works. But then there's things like the skateboard park, where we want to reach out to the community and find out, what do you really want in a skateboard park? And then there's obviously professionals in industry that help us do some of those things. So there's a lot of work that's just gonna take a year, year and a half, just to kind of figure out what it is we want to do with those projects. But we do have a plan. So like Hamlet Park, as an example, I'm sorry, in 2026, you know, some of the highs, we tiered all the projects within the projects. So at Hamlet Park, there might be 12 different improvements being made, but we tiered those out. Here's the top six things that we think should be done right away in Phase One. Here's, you know, the next three things that maybe we want to do in Tier Two, and then the last three in Tier Three. So what you're gonna see right now are all the Tier One improvements that would happen. And then once those were complete, then we'd look at the Tier Two projects and then the Tier Three. So right now, I'm projecting in 2026 would be to replace the existing football soccer field with a synthetic sports field with the lights, the LED sports lights. Replacing the skateboard park, replacing the playground, adding the small boat launch, and then the paddling launch and storage area at Mississippi Dunes to get people on the river there right away. And then River Oaks Mountain Biking Course, adding that. In 2026, we would look to finish the Hamlet South Ball Field Complex, adding those two baseball fields, finishing that off completely, which we've owned that land since 2003, so that would be finally complete. And then adding the parking lot and the supporting landscaping and trail connections there. And then also adding the dunes, trails, and playground for 1.25 million. And then in 2028, adding the Hamlet Park Splash Pad, some dunes picnicking facilities, so picnic shelters and trail connections and slabs and tables and things like that. Dunes landscaping, native habitat restoration, which some of that's gonna kind of happen before that anyhow. But investing into that. And then River Oaks building and patio upgrades with the simulators. Then 2029, we would propose to build the $6 million Dunes Building, which I'll show you a concept plan of that here shortly. Any questions on the local option sales tax project funding? Oh, I'm sorry, if I may. So that's assuming all three go. If only two go, or one go, or none go, then it's revisiting, right, the capital improvements plan next year and saying, okay, how do we need to make those adjustments? So if it's only, let's just say, if only Hamlet Park gets approved, then we go back, we look at it, and we say, okay, we don't need to do any of the dunes work right now, we don't need to worry about any of the local option sales tax from this source of funding. That comes out of this source of funding, so then we focus just on that. So hopefully, that makes sense. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Britton?
Just to clarify, just because I've had people ask me, it's not a half percent per project. It's a half percent total for the local option sales tax, regardless of how many get approved, whether it's one, two, or three.
Great question, Commissioner Britton. The maximum sales tax is 0.5%, no matter how many questions pass. And the maximum revenue that can be gained through the sales tax is $36 million, which is what's been proposed and accepted by the state. So whichever, so the 0.5% max sales tax has to come off either after 25 years or when the $36 million in revenue was achieved.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
This might be a really dumb question. Is River Oaks a golf course?
So River Oaks Golf Course and Event Center, Commissioner Stevens. And what we're trying to do, or I should say, what the plan is aiming to do is actually get more people to use it, because it's 220 acres of public property that the city owns. And the plan is trying to find different ways to use it, get different people down there, using it in different ways to make utilization of, you know, what we consider to be a point of pride in the community. And I'd like to see more people use it in different ways.
So the improvements are to a public building? It's all public?
All public building on public land, yep. So you don't see a lot of golf in here. So other than a Himalayan putting green, which is kind of a glorified mini putting course, which would be free to the public, you're seeing things like the mountain biking course, patio upgrades, the pickleball court slash event court that can be used for events or programs or whatever it might be. And then the simulators, which they can be used for golf, but they can be used for soccer, they can be used for zombie shooting, whatever it might be, so.
Okay, thank you.
Not a lot golf-related in there.
Any other questions on this subject, local option sales tax? I think we're good.
All right, next. So park building designs, very briefly, just want to introduce you to two park buildings designs that we're considering, that the council is seeing, the commission is seeing it to some level. But the Kingston Park Building is replacing an existing building. It's a hexagon, which is not a great shape. It was something that was apparently very, very popular in the '70s and '80s, cutting corners off of buildings. But anyways, the building is kind of just out of age and underutilized. So this plan aims to try to make use of one of our most popular parks and building more use out of one of our most popular parks by building an enhanced building there. A large portion of it is restrooms. There's a lot of restrooms in there. I'm sure as, if you've ever been to any events at Kingston, one of the biggest issues is the lack of restroom facilities. So a lot of this is just restroom facilities, and then one grand room and a small concession room. So I can get you more detailed plans if you want to see it, but I just wanted you to see at least the concept design. And then I should point out that, you know, in the image there, there's the building, and then next to it's gonna be a picnic shelter. Those have been updated, and I didn't get the images updated in time. But the roof pitch changed a little bit, so the roof is actually gonna pitch north to south. Instead of right now, it's going east to west. That's gonna actually save a considerable amount of money on the project. So the council gave us some direction to try to find ways to bring the project costs down. So that was one of the measures we took, and I think it turned out really nice. So maybe I'll share some updated images with Emily, and she can share those with you, so. And then Mississippi Dunes Building, again, this is part of the Preserve Play Prosper Plan, trying to enhance the experience down by the river. So you can see, there's a community room that would be rentable to the public, just like any of our other buildings. And then restroom facilities and a serving, a small serving kitchen. The bottom right picture is what it would look like as you're pulling into the Mississippi Dunes Park. Trying to keep it kind of low-profile, because we really want to make sure that the focus is on the river. And then out the back is the patio, again, trying to enhance the river experience, the connection to the river. Any questions on the two park buildings?
Commissioner Rasmussen?
I really like the new park buildings that are proposed and have recently been built. Do they get staffed? Like, right now, some of our existing buildings, I don't feel like are really staffed, probably don't need to. But how do you manage, you know, public use inside the building?
Yeah, Commissioner Rasmussen, we do not, I should say, if there's a program or event, we staff the buildings. If there's no program, special program or event, then we do not staff the buildings. We do open the restrooms at all of our community parks. So our staff opens them in the morning, cleans them. And then our police department is really lucky to work with our police department. They come in at sundown and close them down. Most communities' police force doesn't do that for them, so we're pretty happy about that. And that's a good time to have cops in the parks anyways. But that's about the extent of the staffing. I should say, our Parks Group spends a ton of time in there, because we get, I mean, the rentals are crazy. I mean, we've tripled or quadrupled our rental facilities just in the last five to 10 years. I mean, they're getting a lot of use, especially these, like Glacier Valley. We projected 40 rentals, and we're already at over 70 rentals for the year, so.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I'm not quite done. All right, last one. Public facilities. So in 2025, we're proposing to do some remodeling of the Public Works Facility, just to expand the shop or move the shop in Wash Bay to make more room for our mechanical, or our mechanics group. So $500,000 there. It's really moving a wall and moving some mechanical systems or whatever else, making that more efficient layout. And then the rest of these are mostly ice arena related. I'll go through them pretty quickly. If you have questions, let me know. Replacing the radiant heat on the west rink, replacing a desiccant wheel on the dehumidifier. Dehumifiers are critical to ice arena operations. So that's just kind of replacing the wheel that gets us hopefully another five to 10 years out of that quarter-million-dollar piece of equipment there. The water treatment system enhances ice conditions and brings down utility costs for $100,000. And then we are gonna look at a space need study, hire an architectural consultant for that to kind of look at. What do we need to do? If you've been to our ice arena, you know, it was built in 1974, it's very blocky. It's all block, I should say. And the office is kind of outgrown, and the point-of-sale area is kind of outgrown, and our customer service with the concession stand, everything's kind of, it's at a point where we're just gonna look at, what can we do with the interior area kind of in that main level and maybe be a little more efficient in our design? So again, that's just a study and a concept review. And then in 2026, replacing furnace and floor scrubber to make sure, keep the floors clean. And then we have two Zambonis that need to be replaced in 2027 and '28. And then, again, just a HVAC unit replacement, just based on life expectancy in '29. And then the big steel roof, the barrel roof on the main rink, that was originally put in in 1989. So I think it's probably gonna last beyond 2029. But again, it's just time to put a number in there, just to make sure we're thinking about it. We've been, we've been pretty good on maintaining that steel roof and making sure it stays. We've gotten, I think we're already 15 years past its life expectancy, but we've really stayed on top of it, so that's good. And I should mention that the Ice Arena, you know, these are all paid through either revenues or the naming rights agreement with North Point. So these are all covered through a different funding source beyond the general fund or any park improvement funds.
All right, any questions about public facilities expenditures? All right.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm gonna continue talking about our streets projects. In 2023, here, we took a new look at a 10-year plan for our pavement management and for Mill and Overlay projects. Our Mill and Overlay is a lot less extensive than a pavement management project. We really take down those top two inches of pavement and then repave those. And this is our 10-year outlay of proposed Mill and Overlay projects. And this is really just designed to extend the life of the pavement, and this one's funded by franchise fees. And then for pavement management, you'll see that in every year of our CIP. We also redid the 10-year plan this year. Pavement management is a more comprehensive street reconstruction. We go all the way down to the gravel base, and we do some utility work, some curb work. Sometimes, like Zach said, we work within the parks that are near the project area. So this is the 10-year outlay for pavement management projects. And then with this, we do rely on residents to fund part of the project costs in the form of special assessments. So starting with 2025 street projects, the Mill and Overlay project for $970,000 is on Hardwood Avenue, and it goes up into the Timber Ridge neighborhood, north of 70th Street there. And then the pavement management project in 2025 for $2.7 million is in the Hidden Valley neighborhood, south of 70th, east of Harkness, west of Hinton. We're also looking at an intersection upgrade at Jamaica and 95th Street. This is a $2 million project that'll be driven by development. A proposed quick trip in the southeast corner of that parcel would partially fund this project. And then we've got a section of Ravine Parkway through the Waltersdorf project, Waltersdorf property, I'm sorry. You'll see Ravine Parkway a lot throughout my presentation. And essentially, development would pay for the construction of Ravine Parkway to a standard roadway section. And then the city would fund any. And then the city would fund any upgrades bigger than that standard roadway section. So wider medians or upgraded sewer pipes or water pipes, et cetera. And we set these aside as placeholders in our CIP. And we're not really sure when the development is coming and where it's coming first. But for 2025, we set aside $2 million anticipating the Waltersdorf property. Our 2026 street projects, the Millan Overlay project would be on 95th Street between Hadley Avenue and Jamaica Avenue. And then pavement management would be in the Thompson Grove Estates 11th Edition and then the southern addition, or southern end of the Woodridge Park Edition. This is about a three and a half million dollar project west of Jamaica. Another big project in 2026 is the reconstruction of 80th Street. This is a $10 million project from Highway 61 all the way over to Ideal Avenue. This will be a really comprehensive street reconstruct. This is pavement, full curb replacement. We do some pedestrian improvements, interchange improvements in conjunction with MinDOT there. And also possible lane reconfiguration at that East Point Douglas intersection. Funding on this project comes from several sources, including MinDOT, the FHWA, also some utility funds and TIF funds from that 80th commercial area. Another project for 2026 is the 80th Street and Keats intersection improvements. The county is planning for a roundabout at this intersection. This will be a project that we do with the county with some MSA funding for $1 million. And then again, here's Ravine Parkway potentially through the tank property, but as development warrants. And it would do, you know, certain sections of that road at the, at the time that the development comes in. In 2027, we're looking at a Millan Overlay at the Highland Hills neighborhood, which is north of 65th, and then Pine Summit neighborhood between 65th and 70th. The pavement management project in 2027 is a big one in two different sections. So we'd be looking at Kingsborough Trail near the River Oaks Golf Course. And then also East Point Douglas between the 80th Street Commercial Area and Jamaica Avenue. And again, another section of Ravine Parkway potentially across the Geis property, $2 million in 2027. I'm going to go through 2028 and 2029 projects pretty quickly. Some of these are kind of placeholders for us to receive some grant funding if possible. So in 2028, our Millan Overlay is going to be the Pine Arbor, Pine Cliff, and Silverwood neighborhoods. The pavement management project for 2028 is portions of Thompson Grove Estates 12th Edition, as well as the northern section of Woodridge Park. We're also looking at a reconstruct on the north side of Jamaica Avenue from 70th to Military. This will be a county-led project. It's kind of being triggered by development up on the north side of town. We've got Shops at Cottage View in here. This will be phase one. This would be construction from Walmart to the roundabout within that Shops at Cottage View project. And then another section of Ravine Parkway, potentially the tank property. In 2029, the Millan Overlay is the Mississippi Dunes Estates neighborhood on the west side of the city. And then pavement management would be Thompson Grove Estates and Hillside Trail. We'd also potentially see a Harkness Avenue reconstruction. That's currently a rural section from Oakwood Park to Hardwood, the northern Hardwood intersection. If development warrants that project, we would go from a rural section to an urban section through there. We're also seeing the 103rd Street Bridge. This is on the northern piece of property by the Mississippi Dunes Development. There's a railroad bridge that just has a 10-foot, four-inch clearance. So we look at reconstructing that to ensure that larger vehicles can pass under that bridge and get down to the southern side of town. Again, Ravine Parkway Phase Two. So this will be a roundabout over to Keats Avenue for 4.3 million. And Ravine Parkway, again, possibly on the Kemp property. And then we're talking about the Cassin 19 overpass at Highway 61. So this is a realignment of the interchange there at Innovation Avenue. And this would really be a MinDOT County project, but obviously we would be connected into that. This plays into the 100th Street, big reconstruction project that we've got in our CIP over the next five years. So we've had a lot of development on the south side of the city. And it really puts increased pressure up there on the Jamaica Avenue interchange. And so with the 100th Street project, we would talk about realigning some of the side streets that come into 100th Street. We would also provide a bridge over the railroad tracks there. And that would eliminate an at-grade crossing, which is really important for truck traffic and for pedestrians in that area. The full project cost for this County Road 19A is $55 million. And this is dependent on important partnerships with Washington County, MinDOT, and again, federal partners. And this project preliminary design has started, is finished. We're kind of in the final design phase and looking to construct this over the next five years, dependent on funding, of course. So moving along to the utility and pedestrian CIP projects, we've got 200,000 annually for some stormwater maintenance. Again, with water projects, 70,000 annually to do some maintenance. And then we've got several 3M settlement projects in 2025, '26, and '27. We plan for the completion of the low zone treatment plant in 2025. And then once that's complete, we'll be getting the intermediate zone treatment plant, which you guys will hear more about tonight. And then in 2027, when those projects are complete, we can start decommissioning the well one and well two and the temporary treatment plant. So that's planned for 2027. We'd also be looking at an industrial park water tower construction. This would be 2025 project and located just east of Hamlet Park between Hamlet and Highway 61. And water tower painting at the Pine Hill Water Tower, that would be 2027. And then finally, there's a big number out there, 100 million for water softening. This is going to provide chloride reduction, which is a really necessary improvement. But it would be a future project. This one isn't currently funded. We're hoping to seek some grant opportunities to help us pay for that one. Sanitary sewer projects, we have 50,000 annually for maintenance. Then we also have a big project in 2024 and 2025 to line the trunk sewer from the Jamaica East Point area down through the Dog Park. That project is under design right now and is, it's expected to be constructed in 2025. We have 100,000 annually for streetlight improvements. And then we're looking at traffic signals in 2025 at Hardwood Avenue and Hardwood Court. So this is near the Coles Development that Connor talked about earlier. And then also in 2026, a signal at 80th and Jamaica, as well as a signal at Keats and Indian Boulevard near the Cottage Grove Middle School. And then pedestrian improvements. This is several RRFB projects, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. So we'd look at Glacial Valley Park in 2025, Jamaica and Hillside in 2025, also 80th at Pine Tree Valley Park, and then Hadley and 92nd in 2025. Some of these projects would be partnerships with the school district. And finally, we are looking at developing a Safe Streets and Roads for All Plan for 440,000 in 2025. And what that plan would do is that it would take a comprehensive look at pedestrian safety throughout the city. And this is federal funded, federally funded. So with that, I went through a lot of stuff there quick, but the recommendation is on the screen and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions on this part of the capital improvement plan? Commissioner Britton.
The, you mentioned in 2028, the reconstruction of Jamaica to Military?
Yes.
Would that include the realignment of Jamaica to Military with the roundabout that would have included with that?
That would include that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Bopp.
So we had a question during the open forum regarding the new bike path. So are bike paths are also in the CIP or are they outside?
There are several bike paths within the CIP. In that area specifically, I'm guessing that that would be part of the 100th Street realignment project. There'll be a lot of pedestrian facilities within that project that would get folks from the west side of the highway potentially to the east side of the highway. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Commissioner Stevens.
I have a question on the water softening.
Sure.
Since that's in the future plans, is that being like, are we doing any work now on the treatment plant to like make room for it if it actually happens?
Sure. I am going to bring our public works director up for that one because he said he would answer any questions related to stuff.
I figured you would know the answer to that one, I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that's a great question because obviously it's a big dollar amount, which as Crystal mentioned, it's not funded at this time. But it's important to have in our CIP just from a planning perspective and if there's ever grant opportunities. For both treatment plants, we did take that into account. So it wouldn't necessarily be a direct part of the building. You'll actually see on the next presentation where that would be located for the intermediate zone plant and for the low zone, we had it as well. But we made sure that we didn't preclude it, right? So however, the water mains were set up on site, however, water entered and left the treatment plant. Wanted to make sure that that would be as easy to do as possible to make sure we weren't, we were setting ourselves up for the future.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. At this time, we will open public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposal may step to the podium. We already did.
Oh, you are.
Yep, and the city's the applicant, so we don't, we can skip that step.
All right. I have my list. Bonnie Matter, 6649 and Skip Avenue South, Cottage Grove. I guess the first thing I'd like to just remind everyone is that the city has no money, okay? The taxpaying residents of Cottage Grove are the owners of each and every item in the capital improvements project plan. The Cottage Grove taxpayers expect good stewardship, transparency, and accountability from city government and city staff for the taxes they pay. When the, when the city spends taxpayer money on large-ticket wants and a developer is not footing the bill like Glacial Valley Park or River Oaks Golf Course or like the upcoming Kingston replacement building, then that want should be put before the taxpaying voters with the complete understanding of how much, how it fits in the current budget, and how we as taxpayers are going to pay for it and for how long. It should be straightforward and simple enough for everyone to understand. One of the questions I had with this whole lost piece, the local area's sales tax was, why Kingston, the replacement building for Kingston, isn't what was looked at versus River Oaks? Why that's not on that? Before taking on additional parks, building bonding, let's pay off the loan on the Glacial Valley Park building first and then begin saving for the Kingston Park replacement building and then the Altman Lacrosse Fields. Let's see. There are ongoing problems with pedestrians trying to cross multiple intersections on both 80th and 70th Streets. How will the city take care of these intersections to protect both residents and visitors? These are the types of public safety issues that require the city's immediate attention. And one of the things that I thought about, I mean, we could do right away is Bayport has flags at their crosswalks. And anyone that's crossing the street can go grab a flag on one side, put it out, walk across, put it into a little container, and that's how they work with it. We've got too many kids that are trying to get across 80th and 70th. Climate resilience. The city experienced at least two major storms this year that resulted in homeowners' damage from flooding, hail, wind, down trees, et cetera. Homeowners' insurance premiums in the state of Minnesota are increasing at rates of 25% or more due to storm damage claims. What type of contingency plans are in place to help address climate change and the accompanying costs for the residents of Cottage Grove? Are dollars set aside for emergencies? And the last thing was, residents are told repeatedly how low our taxes are. In addition to the 2025 property tax increase and according to the 2025-2029 CIP plan, residents can plan on the following rate increases in 2025. A 3% increase in the storm utility fund, a 5.5% rate increase in the water utility fund, a 5% rate increase in the sanitary sewer utility fund, an 8% rate increase for the streetlight utility fund. And if it passes, a local option sales tax of 0.5% will be added to the current 8.37% Cottage Grove sales tax. The city also made an agreement with Excel Energy for a 3% surcharge tax to be added to resident electric bills for buried electrical lines on the East Point Douglas Road construction. The CIP represents only one piece, one piece of the dollars that are going to be needed to finance the city of Cottage Grove. Now might be the time to take a pause on park projects and get the debt paid down. So that's what I'd like to share. I have one other thing, I just can't read my writing. I, I don't know what it, oh yeah, no, this is what it means. The River Oaks Golf Course, there's a lease on it. So it's up in 2025. I don't know what part of it. But I know that there is a lease that's up on part of that golf course and, and I just would like to know more about that. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the proposal? All right, seeing none, we'll close public hearing on the application. I don't know if someone from staff wants to address some of the comments from public?
I wrote down a few things. I know, do you want to start with some last project question?
I was out there for a second.
Oh.
Thank you, chair members of the commission. If I don't get it right, just, just tell me so. But it sounds like the one question was that why was Kingston Park building not in the local option sales tax?
And Zach, I think it was specifically why River Oaks, not Kingston Park.
Yeah. So not every project, it's, it's hard to go. As I presented the commission a few weeks ago, you know, there was a laundry list of park improvement projects that we heard the community that they wanted, right? So we, we took that laundry list of recreational activities. We tried to put those into three different park projects, really not knowing at the time where they were going to go, River Oaks, Kingston, Hamlet, Glacial Valley, or wherever. As we narrowed that list down, we, we looked for opportunities that made the most sense within those locations. And that's really how it ended up. And, and you can't fund everything, right? You have to kind of pick your projects and you have to pick your, your locations. And those were the ones that seemed to make the most sense based on the concept designs. And we refined those designs. We were at, we had five parks at one, we had five different projects at one time. We narrowed it down to three. I shouldn't say that, before that, there was a, there were six or seven park improvement projects. Narrowed it down to five, then narrowed it down to three. And I, I guess I don't have the perfect answer other than you can only fund so much. You can only go to the state with so much and you can only go to the taxpayers with so much to vote on. So those are the ones that were prioritized for the local option sales tax funding. And then there's still, it's not, it doesn't prevent us from still using park improvement funds and park dedication funds for other projects. So they're kind of separate because they're separate funding sources. Not sure if that directly answers the question. Not sure if that directly answers the question, if there's more I need to add, please let me know.
Commissioner Britton?
That's a good explanation, I'll just add on to that, that you mentioned park dedication fee. So that is the developers putting money into the funding to then go pay for the parks, because that was a comment that was made that, you know, they're not paying their fair share, where in fact, as things get developed, money gets set aside for parks, correct?
Correct, Commissioner Britton, and I think it's important to note that that's limited to by state authority, right? You can only, it's 10% or cash, you know, and you can only leverage so much from that funding source as well. And we're finding that that's not covering all the fees, I mean, the, a good example is I used to build neighborhood playgrounds for $25,000, and now they're $100,000 for those same playgrounds, 20, a 20-year span, right? So the fees you can leverage from park dedication fee aren't as productive as they maybe were 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. So it's becoming more challenging as the, as the cost of goods and construction has gone up, it becomes more challenging to build those projects also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to briefly address the pedestrian crossings on Eightieth Street and Seventieth Street. It's important to note that Seventieth Street is a county road, and they do have some planning in their CIP to look into the pedestrian crossings. And then also, the last thing on this presentation was that safe streets and roads for all. That will take a really comprehensive look at pedestrian crossings throughout the city and hopefully generate some great projects where we can see some pedestrian safety upgrades on those busier corridors, so. And then I believe Mr. Burfine has a few more things.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'll touch on a few of the last ones. One was more of a general question about, you know, climate change resilience, I think that's always important. I think when you look at a lot of these projects, they are looking at new things like, you know, stormwater rates, you know, things that are changing, right? As those things advance throughout the years and hundred-year storms and things change, right, as the years have gone on. So that's something that we're always looking at, we actually are going back into our, you know, some different areas of town that don't maybe have the flooding resiliency that other, you know, newer areas that had newer rules do. And that's what we did down on Jamaican 95th, there's a huge pond on 95th Street that took a hugely uncontrolled part of the city that went right down to the river and catches that now in a large stormwater basin and has infiltration. So a lot of the water is actually recharging the groundwater aquifers, so that's always important. We also have a pretty comprehensive water conservation program. We've seen a lot more droughts over the years, right? And it can be really easy for residents just to turn on those sprinklers and it really, it makes an impact on our water usage, right? So we have a big water conservation program with smart controllers and different things to help kind of average out that water usage when we have those dry spells. So I think that is important that we do look at that, and we do look at that individually with projects that we do as well in town. There was a talk about rate increases, and certainly there's discussion in the CIP about utility projects. And utility projects go into a cost on those utility funds, we can cause rate increases. I think one thing, we've obviously had pretty high inflation and pretty, even higher cost index in the construction world. And we kind of averaged that out over the past few years, not having really large rate increases. Other things are just out of our control, so the sanitary utility fund, about 80% of that fund goes to pay Met Council for water treatment. Only 20% is city-controlled, and that's something that we've seen obviously rise throughout the years, so that's a big part of that increase. And then with the Streetlight Fund was another larger increase. That's largely paying the electrical bills to Excel Energy, and I think we've all seen at home that electrical rates have also gone up over the years. So some of those things are out of our control, but where they can be, we obviously do want to be good stewards of those utility funds. And I did want to mention, because I want to make sure it's kind of correct information for our residents, there was talk about a 3% surcharge on our Excel bills to bury power lines. Now, there's two different things. There was power lines buried on the Jamaica and East Point Project, there was a lot of reasons we had to do that. Frankly, just to make the project work, to make the roundabout and the road widening work. That was not a 3% tax, or 3% surcharge on electric bills, that is an 89 cent per customer per month. So whether your bill is $100 or $200, it's 89 cents per month was the funding mechanism to do that. There is a separate percent-based franchise fee that is on the bills, and that's what pays for things like mill overlays, trail replacements in town, and a lot of our road maintenance. That was a different type of franchise fee, that was more just flat rate, right? I think it was somewhere around $3 or $4 per month. But it really put more burden on the residents, and it was kind of a pretty major low cost for higher users in town. So the percentage-based fee is a lot of the ways the cities are going. I'm sure seeing more and more cities switch to that to kind of more equitably have those franchise fees spread out throughout the community. So those franchise fees do not go to paying and bearing power lines, so I just want that to be clear. I think that covers all the questions, if we missed any, you can let me know.
All right, thank you, any further questions for staff? Commissioner Britton?
So, one of the questions was, or, I mean, the way I paraphrase it is, everything in the CIP comes from our tax dollars? Is that true, or are we seeking fundings from outside sources like the federal funding or?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, so certainly part of that is tax dollars, I don't have the exact breakout, but it is a surprisingly small amount that is actual tax dollars, like those projects like pavement management, that is certainly tax dollars. A lot of the different projects that we call development-driven, you know, parts of Ravine Parkway, you know, things like that that are not funded, if it's our, you know, the water tower, for example, that's over time paid for by water area charges that are paid by developers. Developers pay for the implementation of new water towers, new wells, through all the area funds that we collect. And a lot of grant funding as well, that 55 million for the County 19A and Hunter Street Project, roughly, well, 11 to 12 million of the 55 is county and city local dollars. And even in that case, for the city, a part of that will be area funds to pay for the new water and sewer, and then MSA dollars, which actually come from the gas tax. So it is information I think we could get for the Commission if you wanted to see a breakout of what is, let's say, tax dollars versus other buckets. If you had interest, I think we have the information, I just don't have it handy in front of me tonight.
Thank you. All right. Thank you to everyone for responding on that and doing the presentation. Any further discussion from Commission then on the application?
I want to say something.
Commissioner Fisher?
I've been trying to kind of gather my thoughts, but there was a comment about being good stewards of our tax dollars. And I personally think that the city does that very well. I mean, I can go to my house, I can turn my water on, I have no worries about it. Our bathrooms work, my street was just redone. I just, I really, really enjoy living in the city, and I feel like we take pride in our city and we take care of the things. We have awesome parks, we have trails, we have, we have a lot of amenities here that other places don't have. And so I just wanted to say that I think personally, and it's just a little me, but I think the city does a great job with planning out future projects and taking care of the amenities that the city frankly demands of them to take care of, so. Good job, everybody.
But I guess I'll add to that, because part of adding the amenities is then taking care of the amenities we have. So like Zach mentioned, obviously we have all these parks out there, if we just didn't spend the money to upkeep them, no one would use them. And then when we wanted to come back around to make them usable, it would cost a lot more money than we're going to spend on trying to maintain them on a regular basis. And so in order to make sure that all of those amenities are available for people in our community, we have to put the money up. And obviously, that's part of living in a community, that's part of living in a city, is providing those opportunities for everyone who lives in the city. And so that's just part of the name of the game, so.
Right, and I'll add on to that, too, I think Cottage Grove is a growing city, you know, we're not a landlocked city that's already done growing and all of our real estate's used up. Like, we're growing, we're expanding, I mean, in the 10 years I've lived here, the growth I've seen is crazy. And so we have to meet the needs of all these people that are coming to our community. So you hear about the steward going in and the new trunks and the, all the things, like, those are things that we need, that we need to support the people who want to come and be a part of our, part of our city, so.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
I have a quick note, with all the parks projects and just kind of like bringing up, I guess, the environment, the word can't come to mind. But with each project, I know there's a lot of opportunities for incorporating projects and low-impact development, and it's just like a shameless plug for the watershed district. I think they're always really happy to work with the city on those projects, I'm not going to make you come up, so I feel like you were about to. I just wanted to put it out there that they're always really happy to work with the city on those projects. And I think there's a lot of opportunity in the coming years to work together and get education and stormwater and all that stuff incorporated with these. And then you get funding as well, like everybody was mentioning, so that's all.
Any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, at this time, I would look for a motion then.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Britton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Stevens, any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion carries 6-0. Item 6C tonight is the Intermediate Zone Water Treatment Plan, case number PPSV, SPV 2024-019, with Riley Rooney presenting, I apologize.
No worries. All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Before you this evening is a proposal for the site plan review, preliminary plat, and variance for the Intermediate Zone Water Treatment Plant on behalf of the City of Cottage Grove. So the location for the treatment plant is proposed for south of the Central Fire Station in Pine Tree Pond Park, just off of 81st Street South. So the parcel for the Intermediate Zone Water Treatment Plant is on 6.78 acres, and it currently consists of vegetative grasses and a variety of coniferous and deciduous trees, most of which are on the western property line here ordering the residential neighborhood. The topography is a part of slope grade with the highest point along the northwestern property line, with the elevation decreasing towards Pine Tree and Pond Park. So the applicant is requesting approval for the preliminary plat to split 6.78 acres from the Pine Tree Pond Park addition. The preliminary plat proposes the creation of a new parcel with a frontage of 88 feet, creating a legally conforming lot. The application is include, or includes the standard 10-foot interior easement on each adjacent property line. So the parcel is currently zoned R3 single-family residential and is guided as park and open space in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Public utility and essential services are permitted in this district as an administrative conditional use. These are, uses are permitted in this district as they don't really pose any adverse impacts on the residents there with all of the operations confined to the interior of the building. So you're not going to get any noise or odor coming from it. So before I get into the planning aspects of the water treatment plant, I wanted to talk about a little bit of how we got to where we are now. So funding for the treatment plant, or the treatment of PFOS contamination became available after the master water supply plan was finalized in 2021. In addition, last spring, the EPA introduced new maximum contaminant levels for PFOS substances. These maximums were much lower than the previous health guidance by the EPA. To mitigate PFOS in the water supply, the City of Cottage Grove began operation of interim water treatments, interim water treatment plants back in 2017 in order to provide clean drinking water. However, the long-term solution has always been to have permanent water treatment plants. So once the permanent water treatment plants are fully operational, that includes both the low and intermediate water treatment plants, those interim water treatment plants will be decommissioned and those sites will be closed. The first of the two water treatment plants, the Low Zone Water Treatment Plant, began construction last fall and is planned to be fully commissioned by 2020, the spring of 2025. The Low Zone Water Treatment Plant provides clean water for obviously the low zone, the low-pressure zone, as well as the river-pressure zone. Whereas the construction of the Intermediate Water Treatment Plant will supply water to both the intermediate pressure zone and the high-pressure zone. The construction of the proposed treatment plant is planned for the summer of 2025 and to be commissioned in late 2027. Now, for the location of just the Intermediate Water Treatment Plant, the location is selected specifically because of the existing water infrastructure on that parcel, as well as the well locations that are existing around that area. It's really the only feasible and practical location for this essential service to go. And I know Zach, our Parks Director, had touched on it a little bit, but part of the proposal is also to add some increased amenities within the Pine Tree Pond Park. So given the Intermediate Water Treatment Plant is proposed on parkland, which I had discussed earlier, the 3M settlement funds are compensating the city for the value of that land. The City of Cottage Grove recognizes that the proposal will reduce parkland, therefore, in exchange, the compensation received is planned to pay for the park improvements. So those include improvements to the existing playground here, the neighborhood playground, a boardwalk across part of the pond, a new disc golf course, which will include nine holes, a new playground up by the fire department and picnic shelter, and then also a few paved trails. So a connection from Eightieth to 81st Street, as well as a connection for residents from Insdale to the trails there, and then a paved trail through the disc golf course that is proposed to the new park. Okay, so now I'll get into my planning detail. So the proposed water treatment plant consists of a 80, or 58,000 square foot building, which will consist of three floors, one underground and two above. The site has been designed to accommodate the size of the infrastructure needed to supply clean water to residents, while also being mindful of the existing neighborhood, the fire station, as well as the park. The site has also, or the applicant has also proposed a future phase, which would include water softening infrastructure that will be a detached structure, the location is chosen to efficiently access the water distribution after it's being treated at the water treatment plant. So there are two accesses for the water treatment plant. The first is off 81st Street, this is for day-to-day operations for vehicle traffic, so this is going to be the primary access. The secondary access will be used for construction and for truck deliveries to the plant itself. This is done to kind of mitigate some of that truck traffic through the neighborhood. There will also be a shared access road between the water treatment plant to 80th Street, so that trucks can obviously access that parcel. There will be gated entrances at both of the entrances, just to kind of mitigate some of the travel through the site. It's really not meant to be walked through by the public. So to touch on that, the applicant has essentially tried to secure the site. So while pedestrian connectivity won't be directed to the plant itself, as I mentioned before, there are going to be trails that people can access for some more accessibility from the neighborhood and the fire station to the park itself. So the district standards require 14 parking stalls per code. A total of 18 parking stalls are proposed on-site for the water treatment plant, and additional eight are being installed at the fire station, the rear lot at the fire station. This is due to the access road kind of coming through there and taking some of their parking stalls out. So we're just putting those back so that we can meet the code requirements for parking there. So I'll talk about two of the variances, there are two that are requested for this evening. The first is to the maximum building height. Two sections of the building exceed the maximum building height proposed, or the maximum building height established for the zoning district. That includes the stairwell, as well as the LaMelo Room and Detention Take section, both of which just sit above 40 feet in height. The rest of the building will be about 33 feet or less in height. A variance is requested really because we need access between the floors there, as well as the required space for the LaMelo Room and Detention Take Center. The footprint of these two areas is relatively small, it occupies about 7.3% of the whole building. Additionally, the applicant has designed the building to use the existing grade to an advantage. So the majority of the building will sit at about the same height as the Central Fire Station due to the decrease of elevation from the northeast corner down towards the park. Here is just kind of an image, a rendering that was put together by our consultant. So this is Insdale Avenue here, and the view that you're seeing is from the street to the Intermediate Water Treatment Plant. So that birmingham will be put in place to kind of screen or put a buffer between these residents and the proposed use. So really, you wouldn't see too much of it. And additionally, we're going to keep quite a few of those trees that are existing on-site so that it doesn't take years and years and years for those trees to get established and fill in. So the second variance is to the property line setbacks. The applicant is proposing a 32-foot setback from the rear property line. The minimum rear setback in this zoning district is 35 feet, so that is right here. The applicant is proposing mostly because of the limited acreage of the site. The applicant is proposing mostly because of the limited acreage of the site, as well as the necessary space needed for the treatment process. In addition, I should touch on this. In addition, moving the water treatment plant further south would further impact the city water, the existing city water infrastructure, as well as take up more of that park space, which we're not trying to impact. So on to architecture. The proposed building meets and exceeds all code requirements for non residential buildings in residential zoning districts. The proposed materials include precast concrete panels, stone, brick and glass. The building itself has been designed to complement the existing city buildings like the fire station and the one that we're in now. The landscaping meets and exceeds all code requirements. The applicant is proposing a total of thirty six overstory trees, thirty two coniferous trees and a hundred and eight shrubs. Again, that berm will be introduced here to kind of provide more of that buffer. And then a tree inventory was conducted and mitigation is required as part of development. The applicant is proposing ten trees to fulfill that requirement for replacement onsite. And then here's just another higher level of that berm, as well as some of the other landscaping details provided for the site itself. Lastly, I just want to touch on the lighting. So for security purposes, lights will remain on twenty four seven. However, the proposed lighting meets all code standards with a zero foot candle at all neighboring property lines. There are proposed seventeen parking lot poles, which are thirty feet in height, that are composed of a single head that is downward directed. So really, there shouldn't be any adverse impact on the lighting for the neighbors in that nearby property line. And then before I hand it over to our public works director, I just want to show you guys a video that was put together by our consultant, which kind of outlines the scope of the project.
All right. So with that, I will hand it over to our public works director, who will discuss the site operations of the treatment plant.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I really want to be able to touch on what does this treatment plant mean? Because it's obviously a big change for this area of the city, understandably. So I always like to hit on first that this is fully funded through the three M settlement agreement. This really is just, you know, water treatment. I think, you know, each community has a different look at this and different needs, right? There's maybe components that they want to do in addition to fund on their own, but being just water treatment, this is fully funded through the three M settlement, not through any taxpayer dollars or our utility funds, which even though there's nothing good about having this PFAS contamination, we are very fortunate to have that three M settlement fund to pay for these projects. As Riley mentioned, this is the second of our two permanent treatment plants that were planned for through that whole three M settlement process. That was a three year process with the state of Minnesota, all the fourteen communities impacted in the east metro, along with actually local residents and business owners from the east metro that were part of that process to kind of earmark actual specific projects. So this project is specifically called out in that plan. So it's not necessarily something even Cottage Grove came up with on its own. It was a massively long, arduous and collaborative process to get to where we are today. You maybe hear me talk about, I was here about a year and a half ago, talking about the low zone plant where that uses carbon treatment. So it's kind of like a big fridge filter, Brita filter that you have in your fridge that's really meant for PFAS. This is a little different where it uses ion exchange to remove the PFAS. So it kind of works like a water softener where that targets the hardness in the water. This targets the PFAS in the water. The city actually was part of a pilot study funded by the three M settlement to look at ion exchange because it actually hasn't been used in a permanent treatment plan for PFAS in Minnesota. It has been certainly used in other states. Since that time, we've actually have online two temporary treatment plants that use ion exchange and they're working very well. We went that route with this one because you can actually do more treatment with less space. So you can tell we're very crowded on the site. It's a challenge to make this project work in this location. From, as Riley mentioned, from a physical standpoint, it needs to be here. We have seven city wells that come to a single pipe in this location. So we can intercept that, do all the treatment, and then from here, all of our pipes, our biggest pipes in the city are by this park and then get smaller as they go out. So there is really no other practical way to do it other than at this location. But by doing the ion exchange, it made the building smaller. And actually, we've seen over time a lower operations cost with that ion exchange too. So I think there's promising results from that. We do have to remove the iron and manganese from the water before the PFAS treatment. And you've probably seen that when we do city flushing twice a year, we start to turn up the water, flush all that iron that settles out in the pipes. That's something that we have to actually take out because that will kind of plug up these PFAS filters. So that'll actually happen here as well. But as Riley mentioned, it's a very quiet operation. It's not actually operated like some big softening facility or big treatment plants you think of for St. Paul and Minneapolis. It's really automated. We'll have one or two staff that won't even office out of here because they only need to stop in for about four hours a day to make sure things are running properly, just during regular business hours, not even on the weekends. There's not a lot of even coming and going with the actual treatment because that ion exchange, that media is in big metal tanks and it's projected to last for about six years before we have to change it out. So once every six years, you'll see seven or eight semis over the course of a week to do that work is all it is. And then the iron and manganese removal actually lasts about twenty years before we have to do any work on that and change out the sand that's in them. So obviously during construction, fully understanding that's a big effort and that is an impact to the area, but once it's operational, I think we'll be a very, you know, quiet neighbor. Obviously, the main part of this, the main goal, is providing safe treated water for generations to come. Another huge part of this project is reducing the impact of this neighborhood, understanding that it is a major change. Riley talked about using the site grades to kind of bring that building elevation down. So actually, our floor elevation is about sixteen feet lower than the adjacent homes because we didn't want to have the structure towering over people. There's really good natural screening, you know, pretty mature screening along the west property line that we're going to do everything we can to maintain and not impact, along with adding more screening. There's even a bit of a hill kind of south of that proposed playground that if we can, we're kind of work the building into that. So it's not a thirty three foot tall wall, right? Maybe it's kind of a slope grade up to it with a wall at the top, you know, everything we can to reduce that visual impact. And then really the noise, this drive through concept, the fire station's been a great partner. Obviously, that's part of the city, but we cannot impact the fire station operations in any way, you know, every second when they're responding counts. So this idea of kind of using their westerly drive, which we're actually going to expand to make it accommodate two way traffic, that way, even if something were to break down right there, right, they're not blocking that road. But now semi traffic, any type of deliveries, doesn't have to go in and back out. Because what's, what do you hear with semis? You hear backup beepers. Now everything can be a drive through operation with no backup beepers. And for construction, we don't quite have the logistics of this worked out yet, but our goal is to take as much construction traffic off eighty street as possible, just to reduce that impact to the neighborhood of having to come down Insdale and eighty first, you know, right when we start operation, there will likely have to be some, grading is the first thing that happens, right? You got to get grading equipment onsite. We won't be able to do that until we kind of prep everything. So that would likely have to come off eighty first, but when you talk about concrete and different deliveries, if we can get that off eighty street, that's also a reduced impact to the neighborhood as well. So I really want to touch on that because really everything we're doing is going into that, knowing that we have to put this essential service here, but let's be kind of cognizant of the neighborhood as well. The last thing I'll touch on really quickly is just, the commission has seen all of our interim treatment plants, as we have brought those forth, and those were I C U Ps because they were not meant to stay forever. They were metal buildings. They, you know, we didn't build them nearly as permanent. We didn't look at architectural requirements, right? Because we wanted to be cost effective. So there are two treatment plants with the low zone that'll be decommissioned down by Van Meter and then kind of up by eighty seventh street and Grenadier. And then there will be five buildings here plus an additional treatment plant decommissioned once this is operational. So there's five little red boxes on here. Four of those are temporary treatment plants that we've constructed over the years. And the one that's in the most upper right hand corner, that's actually the booster station because this is kind of the heart of our water system. There's separate booster pumps there to send the water to that high pressure zone. That'll all happen within the treatment plant now, so we will not need that building anymore. So that would be decommissioned. And we're working with the parks department to see maybe that parking lot can be expanded for the archery range once we do that. And there's one more temporary treatment plant that's up by Highlands Park by the splash pad that would be decommissioned as well. You saw that in the CIP for twenty twenty seven. It may, you know, go on to twenty twenty eight. And with that, the recommendation is here and staff's available for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fisher.
So Riley talked about gates and keeping the public out of the facility, right? Sorry, you guys. But with the park and the trails and stuff right next to the road, kind of on the western, I think if I'm oriented right, the western side, like how are you, how are we going to keep people from wandering around the facility? Like I understand the gates will keep out the traffic driving through and maybe trying to cut through, but with paths, you're inviting people to walk the property. I just wonder how we'll keep people out.
Sure. I don't know if you want to touch on this a little more.
I can, I can touch on that one, Chair, members of the commission. So there's a couple fences that we'll be working with. One is actually connecting from the fire department to the water treatment plant. That actually came up more because of the proximity of the playground to the fire station, not wanting kids to be playing there and saying, oh, there's ambulances over here. Let's go check them out. So we would looking at a fence there. There's actually quite a bit of chain link fence out here today all around those water towers to kind of protect all that infrastructure. So we would probably maybe look at just tying into that with the trail. And I will say with this project, the city does have a standard of kind of a decorative style fence. So it would not be chain link. It would be the decorative wrought iron style of fence. It's not actually wrought iron, but we would do that similar to what we would do for any commercial developer, right? We want to hold ourselves to that same standard. So we would look to incorporate that as well. And on the eastern side is actually a really large kind of slope and probably retaining wall. So that'll kind of provide a natural barrier from archery range.
Sure. Okay. I just feel like that's a weird place to put a playground, like between the fire department and the, I don't know. Just feel like you're asking for situations, but that's just me. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Brennan.
I think you guys did a great job. Thank you. I think you guys did a great job. The, the whole variance of the setback, public space, public building to public building, you know, I don't think that that causes any issues there. And, and your consideration of the height and trying to build that in is great work. One, one question that I'd have, or maybe, you know, a suggestion would be you're naming these things, the lower water treatment plant and the intermediate water treatment plant, and there's interim water treatment facilities. And the lower water treatment plant provides service to lower as well as river, and the intermediate water treatment plant provides intermediate and high pressure zones. And I found that kind of confusing. There's, there's a lot of information in the packet. And just as a suggestion, maybe call them something different for the long term, referring to these different things as we evolve and they get used for more and more areas over time. I think that would be helpful to not tie them into necessary lower and intermediate.
Thank you for your comment on that one. Thank you.
Any further questions? Commissioner Bott.
So tying to that, when you say the, the heights are specified here in the pressure zones, those are the heights of the water tower or what, what are those heights?
Yep, that's a really good question. So all of our pressure that we have on our water system is created by gravity. So the water towers do provide that height. And Cottage Grove is kind of on a big hill, right? The north end of town is the highest and slowly slopes down to the river. And we have to kind of break that up into zones. And that's how it operates today. That's how it's, the city was planned decades ago. There's kind of a range of pressure that you want to have within a zone from thirty five PSI on the low end, right? That's not great pressure, but it's acceptable all the way up to about, you know, seventy five to eighty. So that's what these are, is different elevations through the cistis. So the high pressure zone doesn't necessarily have higher water pressure than the lower pressure zone. It's just a higher elevation in town, if that makes sense.
Thank you. One more question. What's a lamella room?
The lamella plate settler. So thinking about resiliency and environmental perspective, so we have to remove iron and manganese from the water and we have to backwash these big filters at least once a week. That water is kind of filled with iron and manganese. One option is just to send it right to the sewer, which would be a huge waste of water in our minds. So there's a special piece of equipment, I won't go into the details, but it actually runs the water through it and settles all the iron out and allows us to recycle about eighty percent of that water back through the treatment plant. So instead of all of it going to the sewer, about eighty percent is cleaned through those plate settlers and then can go back and actually be used as, as clean drinking city water. So that's trying to reduce our impact and our sewer usage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, I kind of just have a little comment, being that this is like, you know, fully funded by three M and it's a really cool, the master plan is awesome, the concept plan. So there's a lot of like things that require sod, right? Like the disc golf course and archery. It would be really cool if there were ways to incorporate more native plantings and reduce the irrigation, especially since this is like a water treatment plant and maybe we can demonstrate reduced demand on watering. Has that been considered at all versus just sod everywhere?
Yep, that's a great question. Actually, I'm glad you bring that up, Commissioner Stevens. I should kind of provide that break between the two. So because we are using existing city parkland that was dedicated as a park use, this was discussed with the, with the state quite a while ago, that there should be a reimbursement for the value of that land. Now that is going to be a specific number based on an appraisal and that will then, you know, fund these park improvements. But it's not the actual three M settlement paying for the park improvements. The city would get a specific dollar amount based on an appraisal and then have to kind of fit within that. So anything, and obviously we want to be good stewards either way, but certainly, you know, the three M settlement wouldn't specifically build the disc golf course, let's say. I don't, I don't believe we irrigate things like that, Zach, like a disc golf course. I think we actually do look at more of a native, I mean, obviously can't be native grasses, but there'll be some irrigated stuff with the landscape around the building that's required. But everything around the ponding areas and more open spaces, we actually are looking to do native grasses for all of those areas as well, kind of like the fire station did on the, the eastern side.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Commissioner Rasmussen.
Excuse me. Much larger project than building than I kind of anticipated, seeing the other temporary shelters popping up. I'm just curious, how does this water treatment plant in size compare to the, the low pressure treatment plant, which I believe is under construction or maybe complete?
So from a size comparison, the actual capacity of the plant is about two and a half times, close to three times the capacity, but it's not three times the size. It's probably about roughly, you know, double the footprint, certainly the overall footprint. We're actually using less acreage on this one than the other one because we had to get very creative to kind of make it all work here. But, you know, kind of roughly double the footprint size. Some of those savings are because we have the height, there's kind of the two stories of the office. stories of the office lab space, and then the ion exchange treatment kind of being a little bit smaller in scale.
Very impressive project.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. Before we open a public hearing on this application, I do just want to, in the interest of transparency, as noted in the planning commission packet, there were public hearing notices sent out to everyone who owned property within 500 feet of this project that was 206 property owners. I own a residence within that 500 feet. I received a notice. I don't have any other information about this product or this project, other than what I have learned here tonight. And I don't believe that would affect my, my ability to make a decision on this matter. With that being said, I will open public hearing on the application now.
Can I speak from here?
Nope. You got to come up to the podium, unfortunately. Yeah. Because we need you at a microphone for the TV.
Okay.
The other rule is I need your name and address as well, please.
Okay. Jerry Fuller, 8620 81st Street South Cottage Grove.
Thank you.
I've been a, a citizen of Cottage Grove since 1974. And I've been in this neighborhood since 1986. And that, as you know, from this address, this water treatment business was in all of our backyards. That's not our backyard. It's city property. But we do, as people, use that for getting in and out of stuff in our backyards, trash, grass clippings, so on and so forth. The access currently is terrible. Needs to be improved. But I'm concerned that tonight, did I see we're going to build a golf course there? Like, we need another golf course in Cottage Grove? I guess I'm a little concerned about that. Is that going to be on that property behind us on 80 first street? Just a question I have.
Sure.
I'd like an answer. Doesn't have to be tonight.
Yeah. So what, what we'll do is at the end of the public hearing, as you've probably saw with the other applications, at the end of the public hearing, staff is writing down all the comments and questions right now.
Okay.
We'll close the public hearing. Staff will come up and explain and answer questions.
I've never been at a meeting before.
Yeah.
Never saw a need to do it.
Yeah.
It's been a great place to live. All of those are good things. This project this summer to build whatever that was back there, temporary, I think it's temporary, was just a horrible experience for the neighborhood. You should know that going forward. Try to do better with this if you could. It would help a lot. That's really all I have, if you can get my questions answered.
Yeah. Can I just ask you, just so we can have the best information policy, have the best information available? What was horrible about the experience with the temporary treatment plants?
Well, they blocked access, for one thing.
Okay.
They didn't do a very good job of cleanup when they were doing it. They left open pipes there that are very dangerous back there for people who are using that. The building, maybe that has to be, now that it's temporary, makes me feel much better. If it's going away, nothing could be gone away better than that building. So what you've done with that little, with that treatment center down there looks very nice. And you're to be commended, in my view. I, I don't know what's going to happen to the traffic. I think you guys are right. That's going to be pretty ugly for people who live in that area. But it's part of living in Minnesota. So I don't have anything else.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Yeah, come on up. And then just name an address for you as well.
My concern is what's all going to happen in that whole area behind there. They're talking about golf course, talking about things on other things. But my understanding is that there was a contract put together when they built those houses along that back stretch, that the contract said that they would leave that area completely uninhabited, period. It was just the contract so that nothing would be going crazy back there. And these people could buy their houses with their backyards facing back there. So that's my concern, is what's all going to go on back there. And access to the area back there was difficult. But I just hope they're not going beyond that area than what they are right now. That's my concern. And I guess I would like to have somebody check out that contract. I can come up with it, I'm sure. But check out the contract that was put together by the city.
Okay.
Okay.
And ma'am, can I get your name?
Oh, Diane Fuller.
All right. Same address?
Yes.
Thank you very much. For now.
Fifty-eight years.
Hi, David Walewsko, 81st, 8575 81st Street South. Love living in Cottage Grove. Lived here 12 years or so. Moved from Woodbury, would never go back. I, I love what you guys are doing, thinking about, you know, trying to minimize the effect of everything of those around it. Really appreciate that. The two things that I saw that kind of worried me is just to kind of echo those, the, the disc golf course back there. Like, right now, we have deer and fox and owls and all sorts of stuff out in there. And there is a, to Commissioner Stevens' point, like, there's a bunch of, I don't know if they're native, but they're at least just wild weeds and things that don't require any maintenance whatsoever. We got deer that'll sit out there. We've seen owls hunting, hunting the mice, which is good. I, I really don't want that to turn into, we've taken all these little snippets, you know, to build the fire station, build the temporary plant, build this. Like, I don't want to get it down where the only thing that can live in there is like mice and rabbits. I'd love seeing the muskrats swimming around in the pond. So whatever we can do to try to just preserve that, I really feel that the mini disc course, like, I get the water treatment plant. We need it. The PFAS is horrible. We got to do it. I, yeah, I'm not going to NIMBY that we can't have this water treatment plant in my backyard. I might NIMBY that we don't need a gift, a disc golf course, not in my backyard, but in my front yard. I'd much rather just see that stay native and wild and just leave it open. Don't put a paved trail through. There's a little, there's a little like maintenance trail that we can like run. And there's a paved trail right around the pond. We don't need more trail right there. Just leave that natural, please. And the other thing, and I don't know, there's a solution to this one, is the lighting. I heard that they have to be on 24 hours for security reasons. I'm disheartened to hear that. The top of that hill is actually, it's not a dark sky spot by any means, but it's darker. You know, the latest comet we had, the northern lights, things like that. Neighbors will actually gather up on that hill and watch those things because there's no lights. And you can stand just right in the water towers will block kind of the streetlights from over there. If we have to leave them on for security reasons, I guess we do. But I would love it if we didn't have to. And I don't know if there's someone you can ask to get a variance on that or something. Or at the very least, maybe on the Fourth of July during the fireworks shows, just for one hour, turn them off. Because again, we'll all gather up there. You get a great view of Cottage Grove, Woodbury's, you can pick out other cities all going off. It's a beautiful bill. You guys know, you live right there. Yeah. So those are my two things. Again, thank you so much for the environmental concerns and all of the stuff about keeping it a little pro after the neighborhood. Really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, at this time, we will close public hearing. And then Riley, if you want to go ahead and start answering some of those questions?
Yeah, I'm going to try and get to as many as I can. And then I'll probably defer to Ryan and Zach for a little bit more information on the other things that I can't address. So first, for the disc golf course, I'll pull up that image. Just to clarify, it's not a standard golf course. Disc golf is a little bit different. It's kind of like frisbee, but it's not exactly, you're not hitting balls in the, you know, in people's backyards. So you're not going to get like your window broken in. I, from my understanding, this disc golf course is meant to be less of an impact. It's not like a standard disc golf course where there's 18 holes and there's going to be tournaments. It's supposed to be pretty quiet, reserved for the neighborhood itself. I know Zach can talk about that a little bit more than I can myself. But again, not a golf course, golf course. In terms of construction traffic, I think Ryan can probably give a little bit more information or Lee can on that end. Of course, we always want to make sure that we're not impacting the neighbors or we're trying to not impact them as much as we can. So we can take some of that commentary into our feed or into our process when we go into construction. If you need any more images, I'm certain that we can provide them as to what's going to happen where and when for the whole of the park and the water treatment plant. I'm not familiar with the contract that Diane had brought up, but we can certainly look into it, should it be in our files anywhere. And then to address David's comments, again, I think Zach can probably talk a little bit more about the plans for the golf course and his intentions for keeping the grass or not keeping the grass, and I believe the trail as well. I think that's all I can address right now. I'm going to turn it over to my counterparts.
Thank you, Riley, Chair. Members of the commission, Zach Doctor, Parks and Recreation Director. Again, yes, Riley, Riley alluded to the disc golf course. It is meant to be a novice disc golf course. So there's probably five or six holes and much shorter holes. So it's meant to be maybe a spot where you learn with a child to throw a frisbee, you know, a few hundred feet instead of going to Oakwood where you're going, you know, a couple hundred yards. So it is meant to be very short, very passive, really shouldn't have too much impact on the land that's there already, because there's already grass trails. We tend to keep most of those grass trails the way it is. And I'll tell you, I actually, I started the restoration of the habitat restoration of Pine Tree Pond back, I think it was 2013 or 14, trying to get that area with some native wetlands and grasslands and woodland areas as well. So that's been under, that's been under process before the new fire station was built. So it's definitely a passion of mine to make sure that we preserve as much natural habitat out there as, as possible. And then trails, most of the trail expansion, as far as by two minutes trail are going to be up on that northwest side, just getting the neighborhoods into a little better access into the park. You aren't going to see a lot of path growth beyond that, impacting too much beyond what's already there. And then I think that was about all I had. And yeah, I'm not aware of a contract either. I guess in the 24 years I've been here, I've never heard of a contract for anything with the public land behind those space. But would be happy to see it and review it if that comes to us. Any questions for me while I'm up here?
I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll quickly address the lighting question. One thing to hopefully provide a little more information, the style of lighting. I think a lot of folks see the lighting in the neighborhoods, which is more the globe style light, which certainly can have more of an impact on the night sky. This is all downward directed following the city code for area like this. So kind of like we'd see out in the parking lot where it's all faced down with the hood over the top. We do want that on just because this is obviously very critical infrastructure that has a lot of kind of security issues and threats. And we want to maintain that. I think maybe at Fourth of July, we could, we could take a look and maybe we could flip the switch. Luckily, they are LED now, so they're a lot easier to turn on and off than the old high fresher sodium lights. So maybe we can take a look at that.
And then Ryan, the other thing about the lighting is, and I know, I think Riley had mentioned it in her part of the application, was that the, the city code requires that at the, at the property line, that there's a zero foot handle spillover. And so if you're at the property line, there shouldn't be any light coming from those lights, right?
That is correct. Yep. And we are meeting that code requirement.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff from commission? Any other discussion on the application? I guess I'll just echo, I think a lot of the residents here, as well as Commissioner Britton and Commissioner Fisher, on thank you to staff for being very intentional about the project. And there's going to be disruptions. And I think everyone understands that. And it's going to be unfortunate that there's disruptions and things aren't going to go perfectly. But this is something that the city desperately needs. And that it seems like it's a very good plan that, again, I think staff has been very intentional about trying to make it the worst kind of situation as best we can. So thank you guys for your work on that. There's no other discussion. I'd look for a motion at this time.
I'll move to approve, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Britton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say no. Motion carries 6-0. We're on item 6D Cannabis Ordinance Amendment, case number TA 2024 dash 021, with our city attorney, Corey Land, presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I haven't seen you guys in a long time. I know you're very excited, but hopefully very tired. This is a complicated subject because the legislature has made it complicated for us. You may recall, back in 2022, we adopted some cannabis regulations. I want to be very clear that those are outdated language. Everything that we have in our code is basically outdated. None of the definitions matter anymore. We have a moratorium, though, so that nothing new can come in. The legislature did, in its infinite wisdom, decide that all cities moratoriums must expire December 31st of 2024, which is why we're here now, because we have to put new ordinances in place before the end of the year. If we don't, then these uses would be able to come in without any kind of regulations or zoning. So we will be introducing the zoning ordinance amendments now. And then there will also be, excuse me, can I, can I have you guys, excuse me, the back of the room? That's all right. We just have more business. So if you guys want to step out in the hallway, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
So we will also be adopting new regulations on what we currently have as a licensing scheme for these cannabis businesses. We can no longer license them once the Office of Cannabis Management is operational. So we will be registering them. So it's going to be basically a do-over. You're the first step. As we said in 2022, the council adopted an ordinance legalizing edible cannabinoid products. We all learned how to say cannabinoid. Isn't that fun? These are the gummies. These are the ones that everybody understands as these were the gummies that were introduced at that time. The council, though, took a very comprehensive approach and said, where do we want these now called low potency THC products? Where do we want them? And you recommended approval of the B3, the PB, and the MU zoning districts. And we allowed them as permitted uses. So there's no, there's no planning application required to have those kinds of products in the stores. But we've only had one license application since that time, and that's for High North. And so they are the only, they are officially the only business in town that should be selling any low potency edibles. We don't want to know if anyone else is. In 2023 and 2024, the legislature introduced 13 cannabis uses. Medical cannabis had been a thing since mid teens, I think it was 2015, 2014, when they adopted medical cannabis. So that has been present in Cottage Grove for a very long time, with whatever Leafline Labs is calling itself now. That's in the business park. And they are the only authorized medical cannabis manufacturing, one of two in the state to manufacture medical cannabis, which they then can sell at their outlets, which again, are, are approved by the state. Now we will have adult use cannabis as well, and all of these other kinds of uses. And we have to fit them into our code. So that's what this exercise is about tonight. We did have a workshop with the council at the beginning of October to take their policy level, what, where do you want to see these uses? We, we sort of laid them out with low potency to test it. Are we still comfortable that we can now translate this into the adult use category for all of these uses as well in the zoning districts that we had already decided? So that's, they gave us some direction. The legislature did allow that cities, they don't have to, but they can introduce distance restrictions from specific uses like schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities, really good idea, and parks where minors tend to congregate. So not the park property, but the park attraction itself. So if there's a playground, if there's a picnic pavilion, if there's something that is going to attract minors from that location, then we can have a distance restriction. So we are recommending introducing- So we are recommending introducing those distance restrictions, which then put a bunch of bubbles. So now we have bubble maps that we've created to show you what parcels are left within the zoning districts for each of these uses, where these kinds of uses could actually operate. So of these 13 uses, we can kind of categorize them into big pictures. The lower potency, which is both the beverages as well as edibles. Adult-use retail, which is your basic dispensary, think of it as a dispensary. The manufacturing industrial kinds of uses, and then there's cultivation. So that's going to go in an agricultural zone. What we're suggesting for the lower potency retail sales, so these are the edibles, is the current zoning districts that we have today. So it would be the B3, the PB, and the MU. We are recommending for all cannabis uses that they be conditional uses, so you will see them. These aren't administrative conditional uses, these are full-blown conditional use permits. The reason for that is because even lower potency require special security, they require, everybody has to be over 21 to purchase it. We just feel like they need to, need a little extra special love and care, as I say, for a conditional use permit, to see if there need to be any other conditions placed on it. So you'll have the chance to see where they're going to go. We are also recommending 1,000 feet between cannabis uses. What we've seen in other states happen is that you will end up with shopping malls where there's just one store after another of these lower potency edible places or adult-use places. And so we want to try to, to separate them out a little bit from each other. So we are recommending, the council did direct, that they be 1,000 feet between uses, not just low potency uses, but any cannabis use. So if there's an adult-use dispensary, then there must be 1,000 feet before you can have a low potency edible retailer. So 1,000 feet between all cannabis uses. We do have one, as I said, existing cannabis retail store. We don't know for sure whether they will continue with lower potency, or whether he will want to become an adult-use dispensary. So we did sort of anticipate what would this particular section of this zoning district look like with the 1,000-foot buffer around it? And that would still leave parcels within that zoning district that could operate low potency. So just, it's a hypothetical at this point because we don't know for sure that he will want to continue even selling low potency, or whether he wants to be adult-use dispensary. But if that particular business owner chose to operate here, this is what that bubble would look like. The adult-use retail, we are recommending all of the buffer zones, which is 1,000 feet from schools, 500 feet from the park attraction itself, 500 feet from daycares, but not all daycares, just daycares located within the business districts. So if it's a residential daycare, we aren't counting those, because that would basically probably eliminate most of the commercial district. So we are just saying that more of the commercial daycare centers, 500 feet from those daycares, and then again, 1,000 feet between uses, which is hypothetical. But this is what the bubble map looks like with those areas restricted, and the green parcels outlined in green are where the adult-use cannabis retail stores could operate. So as you can see, there still is an opportunity for them to operate in, in those zoning districts. Lower potency beverages, under the new laws, are allowed to be sold at any place that has an on-sale liquor license or an off-sale exclusive liquor store license. So that's permitted, but it's not allowed unless we zone it. The council directed that we would not, they did not indicate they felt it needed to be zoned in a particular way. If you're allowed to sell it at a liquor store or at an on-sale liquor establishment under the state law, they felt that that would be acceptable without any kind of buffering, without any conditional use permit requirements. So the only thing that they would be required to do, because they still are a lower potency THC product, they would still be required to register with the city. So under that provision of the city code, they would still, we would still know that they're selling these products so that we can do compliance checks, but there wouldn't be any kind of zoning restrictions. So we just wanted to put on the map where those are, just so you could be aware of this is where the THC beverages could be sold. And you would not know unless you walk into that establishment and see it on the menu. The, as I call the manufacturing type uses, this is the, the new made-up terminology that the legislature came, legislature came up with, with the micro business and the mezzo business. Micro and mezzo are the, basically, it's the farm-to-table concept, where they are actually cultivating the product, manufacturing the cannabis plants into a product that then they can sell, and in some cases even have onsite consumption. So it's the whole gamut from seed to sale of a cannabis product. The micro is a bit smaller, smaller operation than the mezzo business. So the mezzo business is just bigger. But it's also, we're also putting into the category manufacturing, any testing facilities, and then the medical combo license is basically everything that they could do, which is the seed to sale as well. So this is the industrial park. We're saying that these businesses can go anywhere in the industrial zoning districts. But then we would apply our buffer zones. So when we put our bubbles on there, we also added, the council actually directed, that there should be 1,000 feet from residential property. One word of caution that other states have discovered is that the manufacturing process does not smell pretty. It doesn't smell like sunshine and roses. It actually smells like a skunk. So unless there's great odor mitigation technology used, that will be smelled. And so we will need to require very specific odor mitigation measurements, which we did with Leafline Labs to some degree of success. We need to make sure that they understand they need to keep that up to date, because there have been recent, I would say, violations of that. But we also are recommending to the council that we adopt an odor ordinance, so it doesn't just apply to cannabis uses, but all odor in the community, to make sure nobody, no businesses are impacting their neighbors, or regular property owners for that matter as well. So that's part of this whole plan, was we would also adopt an odor ordinance and make sure that these properties are not going to be a nuisance to their neighbors. But when you put the, the bubbles restrictions, so all of the other buffer zones, which 1,000 feet from a school, 500 feet from the park attraction, 500 feet from daycares, which I don't think there are any, and then we did put a red circle around Leafline Labs, 1,000 feet from each other, because they do exist, then you do end up with the green parcels outlined in green where these uses could locate. So there still is land available in the industrial park for them. Cultivation could be indoors or outdoors. We are recommending that there must be at least 40 acres contiguous for the property to be able to do the cultivation, just because of the, again, the impact that it can have on the adjacent properties with, that's not an odor you can contain. When those go to seed, it's going to be smelled by the neighboring properties. So we're just trying to provide a natural setback buffer from the adjacent properties, and also, again, 1,000 feet from residential property, and then all of the other buffer zones as well. So there is still some ag land where they could do cultivation, where they can, it's not all in single ownership, but there is a bunch of this ag-one property that could be combined, you know, somebody could assemble some, enough to get 40 acres, and they could do cultivation. So that's, and cultivation can also be indoors in a greenhouse or in a hoop house. And so we're concerned about that process as well, again, protecting the neighboring properties from that. We will have general performance standards for all cannabis uses, that they can't be a nuisance, which we will make sure, we're tweaking the odor one to make sure that that is as, again, not trying to single out just cannabis uses, but apply to all businesses and other properties in town. A security plan, because that's going to be tailored to each type of business. We can't spell out what that looks like, but we do want it approved by the, the Public Safety Department. Retail hours of operation, the legislature said you can limit, you don't have to. It can't be before 10:00 AM, but you could allow it up until 2:00 AM. We, the council felt that 10:00 PM was sufficient for retail hours. They didn't think that, that these retail stores needed to be open later than that. That would not apply to the beverages, since they're being sold at the, any place with an on-sale liquor license or exclusive liquor store, whatever their hours of operation are, they could sell it. Home occupations is not allowed, just be relieved. They can't be operating these, these types of businesses out of their house. There's no online sales that would be allowed out of your home if you have products, and that's by state law. That wouldn't be just our ordinance, but we're going to say it out loud in our ordinance, just to make sure people understand that. So I'm happy to, you know, discuss any of these bubble maps with you, if you want to dive deeper into them. Again, this is what the council directed to be presented to you. If you think there needs to be some, some tweaks, we certainly can do that. We will be discussing the registration process with the council on the November 20th workshop. We can certainly update them as to the, the status of this ordinance at that time as well. And then we need to adopt something, we have two meetings to work with in December. If we needed to come back to you, we probably could, but we need to adopt it before the end of the year, or our moratorium expires along with every other moratorium in the state. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Britton?
Would that include having the odor ordinance in place by that time as well?
It would, yep. That would be included in the final adoption with the city code amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Do we know of people that are, like, ready to go and are wanting to open up facilities? Have we had inquiries, or?
The only inquiry we've had is from Leafline Labs. So right now, the Office of Cannabis Management is still trying to establish themselves. They are, they're making rules that then have to be adopted, and once those rules are in place, they have to get a sufficient staff level up to be able to process any applications. So frankly, they're not ready to process anything yet.
Sure.
The way that it will work eventually is that people will submit an application to the Office of Cannabis Management. They will do the background and confirm that they can apply for that particular license. Once they've confirmed that, they will send a zoning request letter to each city that these businesses want to locate and say, hey, there's a business here, is zoning, are they compliant with zoning if they go here? If they haven't yet applied for a conditional use permit, the answer will be no. They will have to then apply for that conditional use permit, and then they can go back and say yes, now they've met zoning. They will then be issued their, their license from Office of Cannabis Management, which they walk in hand over here to City Hall and say, now I'm ready to register. And that's when they can open. So it's a lengthy process. The only thing the Office of Cannabis Management is currently reviewing is cultivation, early cultivation licenses, and I don't believe they've been able to issue any or approve any yet. Certainly, they couldn't in the city of Cottage Grove because we have our moratorium anyway.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Commissioner Bott?
So in the maps that you showed with the ag-one and ag-two, I thought ag-two was also marked green, so they can grow in both locations?
Correct, ag-one or ag-two.
Okay.
If they have the sufficient number of acres.
Okay. One other question that I have is, so right now, are those places selling the beverages, which you had marked, that have the liquor licenses?
Currently, no, because the city of Cottage Grove does not allow it under our existing ordinance. We said they could not be sold. At the time of the 2022 legislation, it was prohibited that they could be sold at liquor stores. The legislature cleared that up either in 2023 or 2024, I don't remember which version, that said they can be sold, but regardless, our ordinance says they couldn't. So we, we did not allow them to be sold at either on-sale or off-sale. So again, none of them should be.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I guess I have one question, and this might be a little in the weeds, but I'm just interested. So for the low potency, low potency beverages, they have to register. So if one of the liquor stores here in town registers with the city, and you said that's primarily so that we know that they're doing it so we can do compliance checks. Obviously, with a liquor license, that's issued by the city and can be revoked by city council if there are issues with compliance and there are spot checks by the police department. Because we're only registering those businesses, are, do we have the ability to un-register them, or is that then something you have to send to the Office of Cannabis, Cannabis Management where they then revoke the licensure? Or do we not know yet?
No, no, that's a great question. We actually did, I, I needed to dive deep into the answer to that question, and the answer is the Office of Cannabis Management will be the one handing out any penalties if there are any. We can, as you know, revoke a liquor license. And so if there are violations of either cannabis or liquor, I would think we could take that into account, because it is a product that they are selling within their store. However, we would notify the Office of Cannabis Management. We can, if we feel that it is immediate health, safety, public welfare kind of issue, we can immediately shut them down, but only up to 30 days. And the Office of Cannabis Management can overrule that. So it is, it is something that we can do, it's not a permanent something that we can do. And so I went back and forth on whether or not we should require CUPs for, for beverages as well, but the council felt that it was sufficient that we still have them under a liquor license.
Okay. So it's the belief, at least at this point, obviously outside of the licensure under Office of Cannabis Management, that if there is a violation of this ordinance for low potency beverages, that we can still take action on a liquor license, because it's just part of the conditions of them having the ability to sell alcohol in the, in the city?
And here's why I say that, because one of the, one of the requirements in our liquor license is that you must comply with all state laws.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much. So at this time, then, I will open public hearing on the application. Anyone want to speak for or against the application? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close public hearing on the application. Any further discussion or questions, comments from Commission? Commissioner Bott?
I just have a simple question. So in the next steps you have listed zoning, city code, and fee schedule, what's the fee schedule there?
The registration process allows the city to collect a small application fee with each registration. So as long as we have to keep track of them, we're going to have to be doing compliance checks, we're, we're going to adopt a fee schedule that the legislature has capped the amount of the fees, so they're really quite minimal, but we may as well add it to our fee schedule.
Thank you.
Any further comment, discussion? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Britton, he broke the tie there. All those in, actually, first off, any further discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Or say no? Motion carries 6-0. Item seven tonight is approval of the minutes. Seven A is the minutes from our last meeting on August 26th of 2024. Unless there are any additions or corrections, I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve from Commissioner Rasmussen. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second from Commissioner Bott. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Or say no? Motion carries 6-0. Eight is reports. Eight A is a recap of September and October city council meetings with them.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I waited all evening to be able to chat with you. That was pretty impressive, right? But anyhow, we're going all the way back to the beginning of September, so the September 4th council meeting. So that minor subdivision, and there was a variance you guys approved, creating on Kimbrough Avenue, about a three-acre parcel for a new buildable lot. The council did approve that on September 4th. Jumping ahead, interesting fact, we did cancel our September 18th meeting, council meeting this year, which was a once-in-a, I don't know, 20, 30-year event that we see. So our October 2nd agenda was heavy, a lot on the consent side, but a couple items that I did want to mention from a planning commission perspective, we did submit our comment letter to the Metropolitan Council as they start to put together their Imagine 2050. Yes, you heard me right, 2050. We are starting to think about our 2050 comprehensive plan, not to worry, you won't see anything in front of you probably for another year and a half or so. We'll get our system statements at the end of next year, and then that process will look to start sometime around 2026, as we look at that 2050 comprehensive plan. So again, working closely in, with the Metro, or the, the League of Minnesota Cities, as they put together that regional plan that will start to follow as we update our comprehensive plan. And then you'll see some activity down And then you'll see some activity down in Jamaica and 95th. They did approve the project to just reroute some storm sewer. I just thought it was worth mentioning for you folks, if you're in that area. And that's to make sure that that storm water that's coming across Jamaica Avenue, kind of at that corner where, where the compost site used to be, potential quick-trip site, is actually moving and now dumping that into, and these are not engineer terms by any means, but dumping that into the flume that comes through our business parks, so kind of rerouting that water to that appropriate location. And finally, the October 16th council meeting. Commissioner Stevens, I thought you would appreciate this one. We did update or renew our agreement with Washington County Conservation District as they do do our inspections here in Cottage Grove to ensure that we are up to date with our MS4 permit. So I just wanted to mention that for '25, '26. And then finally, Oldman Middle School, as they continue to work towards their addition expansion, they did need to readjust some easements on their site. They've got a water main that goes around, things of that nature. So Connor Jakes was wonderful and kind of cleaned that up, so they're ready to hit the ground running when they're probably next year for that addition. So with that, that was a quick recap. Councilmember Kamada, if you have anything additional to add, or if commissioners, you do have any questions, we're both available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Yeah, quite a lot's happened in two months, you know, between some adverse weather conditions, some challenges that staff had with, you know, clearing roads and so on. I can't wait to see what this fall and winter bring in terms of abnormal weather conditions. But no, I think Emily did a great job covering the important stuff with regard to planning and development. I know that we have the MNCAR conference here coming up that we'll be attending, so we'll be communicating with some other commercial partners hopefully there and might have some more exciting proposals in front of you guys here in the next few months. And I'm open for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for Councilmember Kamada or Emily? Thank you very much. 8B is response to planning commission inquiries. We didn't have any from August. 8C, planning commission request for this meeting.
I have one.
Commissioner Fisher?
I don't know if this should have been a question before or what, but first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the city for all of the cleanup efforts after the storm. Like, we had a huge, we had, we lost three big trees. Our neighbor's tree fell and snapped a power line and whatever. But it got me thinking, as I was watching the cleanup efforts and just seeing the change of the landscape, do we as a city have some sort of, like, the dead trees, for example? Because Emerald Ash Bor has, like, completely ravaged lines and lines of trees throughout the city. I think of one, and I don't want to, like, name, like, roadways, but there are lots of dead trees in our city. And I'm just wondering, is there some sort of ordinance or some sort of way that we can help our, our people remove those trees? Because the, the tree damage that we saw through that storm was pretty substantial, and I just can't help but think that removal of some of those dead, big, huge trees that I've seen now for two years, almost three years, if, if there's some sort of resource for the citizens or, I don't know. I don't want to, like, go knock on doors and say, you have to do this, but I, I'm just wondering if there's resources or something, you know, at a state level or, or something that we can help people with that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher, it's certainly something that we've had a lot of conversations internally about. We do have an ordinance that requires removal of diseased trees. We recognize that, but we also want to be sensitive. To your point, Commissioner Fisher, there are some large trees out there and a pretty hefty price tag with removing those. At this time, we aren't aware of, of funding sources. Obviously, we're continuously keeping our eyes and ears open if those opportunities do exist, whether it's at a county level or even at a state level. If we can secure some dollars to help our residents, we're certainly always paying attention to them.
All right.
We'd like to note that we do employ an arborist, and they do treat Emerald, or some of the ash trees in the city, specifically the ones that happen to be on city property or boulevard trees. But interesting fact about the storm that we had is the nature of the storm, it took down more live trees than dead trees. And as a council, we're still trying to decide how we're going to mitigate the pile of trees that is building up as a result of that storm. So we'll keep you posted on that, but yeah, great question.
Yeah, I definitely agree with you. A lot of trees were alive, but it got me thinking about, you know, all the dead ones that I wish the storm would have taken away, but people can't afford to, I mean, because it is, it's thousands of dollars to have trees removed, and so, just looking for resources for people.
Commissioner Bott?
So this is a request in that there was a program, I think it was a state-sponsored program, if I remember correctly, which would give rebate or, like, money back up to a certain amount if you were to install a new washer, dryer, or dishwasher in your home. But that got stopped because the funding stopped or something along those lines. So I was wondering if that program is still active or was reactivated or not. I came to know of that program through the newsletter sent out by the Minnesota senator. I didn't come to know of it in any other way, but apparently Cottage Grove had that program.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bott, sometimes there are rebates through the utility companies, XL or your gas company will do that rebate. From a city's perspective, we don't have one, but I'm happy to investigate if we're aware. And Assistant City Engineer Crystal Raleigh is going to provide some additional detail.
We do actually have a rebate program that we can help our residents with. So it did run out of funding, but we have been refunded for, I'm not positive when that refunding happened, but some of my staff is working on those energy efficiency rebates. So I believe there's a link on our city website if you are interested in applying for rebate. And then that gets reviewed here with our engineering staff, and then the rebate goes out.
Where is that link exactly? Is it the engineering department? Where should I go and look for it?
That's a great question that I'll have to get back to you on. I don't know exactly where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any further, Commissioner Bott?
Yeah, I do have one more request. So during the discussion today, it was offered that they could provide us a breakdown of tax dollars spent on projects, right? So just for our reference, I mean, we don't have to go through all the projects, but maybe we can pick one year, maybe 2025, and give us that breakdown of how much is city, our tax dollars and how much is funding from outside. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bott, we can provide that as an update.
Thank you. Commissioner Britton?
Not a request, but a comment in the Capitol Plan presentation. There was a reference to mounting bike trails, and I think it might be mountain bike trails. They may spell it different ways, but it might be something that you want to clean up before it goes to the city council.
All right, any other, any other requests? It's now 9:32. Request for staff before we're done tonight?
No.
No? Okay. I guess the other, last thing I will say is, Election Day is next Tuesday. Please make sure you take the opportunity to vote if you'd like to. Outside of obviously all the partisan offices, there are city council positions, the local and use tax presentations that we've seen from the city on some pretty important pieces that the city would like to do, as well as some other races, like judicial races are on the ballot that are very important for everyone to do some research and look at. So that'll be my plug for Democracy at the end of the meeting here today. There's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Post say no? 6-0, we are adjourned.